A motion to reconvene open public session. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
So it is moved by Claire. Second by Catherine.
Thank you.
All, uh, let's do the roll call.
Ms. Versa? Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Yes.
We need a motion to approve the June 2nd regular and executive session minutes.
So moved.
Is there any discussion on those minutes?
No.
Linda.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Wharton?
Abstained.
Linda, were there any communications?
I don't recall, uh, there may be in a smattering of emails, not that much. Again, I want to remind the board members of the annual New Jersey School Boards Association Workshop from October 28th to 30th in Atlantic City. If anyone is interested in attending, please let my office know. And also, the deadline for school board candidates for the November election will be July 28th. Petitions are available in the business office of the school district and at the county clerk's office.
Thank you, Linda. Tim?
Let's start with your last student update.
Finals will begin in the high school tomorrow and are ending Friday, the 20th. The graduation ceremony is scheduled for Monday, the 23rd at 6:00 PM. Also, our new Students of the Year have been announced, and they are Jacenia Garcia and Jonathan Harley, both seniors. And this week, Student Congress is organizing International Week, which is basically a week to celebrate the diversity within our school. And in Center Hall, there are thirty, I believe thirty-four flags hung up to represent the different nations in which students are born from the high school. And...
Some students in the school have been speaking out about the dress code with a series of flyers put up around the school. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that. But it's clear that there is a group of students in the school that do not support the code and the message it conveys to young women. And also, we just wanted to thank you for having us this year because it's been a truly exciting experience and, um, it's been an enjoyable experience and we wish you all the best in future, so.
Thank you. It has been unique.
Yes. It will be a good graduate school essay one day.
Can I add that our student representatives are being very modest and they're not announcing certain things about themselves, such as honor. What was your position on Honor Society?
Vice President.
Vice President. She sang the National Anthem at the Honor Society induction the other night, sang it beautifully.
Thank you.
And Elena Weisman is the salutatorian for the graduating class this year. So congratulations to both of you. I also want to announce that the Highland Park High School baseball team won the sportsmanship award for Greater Middlesex County. So congratulations to Coach Blevins and all of the students on the high school baseball team.
So for the last meeting, we have our board recognitions, and so I'll turn it over to Dan at this time.
So this is the sagging microphone. Um, I want to thank you all for coming, and this is a very exciting evening. There are a lot of very wonderful things for us to announce. And we are going to start by honoring our retirees, and what I'm going to be doing is calling up the principals of the buildings and some of the other folks to discuss each of these folks. So I'd like to first introduce Mr. Israel Soto.
Coming up to render tribute to a woman who is so multifaceted and has meant so much to the Bartle School community over the years is not an easy thing to do, particularly when faced with the milestone of retirement. Lauren Fraser came to the Highland Park from South Brunswick. She began her leadership career at Bartle as an assistant principal, and in 2005, she began a new journey as the instructional leader. As a principal, she could be seen greeting students in front of the building each morning, conducting classroom walkthroughs, and attending to the needs of students, teachers, and parents. Her relentless dedication to Bartle, her political savviness, and her ability to galvanize her teachers and staff to accomplish common goals gained her much respect from all who have come in contact with her. It is well known that Lauren has a gift of reflection and getting to the root of any problem. The truth will prevail with Lauren. I would imagine the plethora of accolades that can be attributed to Lauren. However, in the short time that I have personally come to know her, I can say that her impact and multitude of roles reach far beyond the perimeters of a principal. She has played the role of investigator, of problem solver, guidance counselor, marriage counselor, custodian, police officer, drill sergeant, poet, organizer, motivator, and for many, mother goose. And to think that she was able to accomplish all these roles and do it with such dignity, compassion, and aplomb is a tribute to her dynamic talents, not only as a leader, but as a human being. Lauren, you have much to feel proud of. Bartle has become the embodiment of its leader. It's a beautiful place where kids and adults flourish in an environment of respect, of honesty, of hard work, and intellectual inquiry. Pep rallies, crazy hat days, Halloweens, and the word perseverance will never look nor sound the same. So today, we honor you, Lauren, and hope that your life has been equally fulfilled as you fulfill this community. Hopefully, your retirement would just be the beginning of you working on living instead of living for working. Congratulations, Lauren, on your new chapter in your life. Enjoy it with your family, friends.
Thank you. I wrote something, so I would say what I wanted to say, so forgive me for reading. I want to thank you, the community, for entrusting your children to my care over the years. This is a wonderful town, and I could not love your children more. Over the years, Bartle's families have demonstrated real generosity and concern for everyone's children, not just their own, and their support of our staff and the goals of our school have always been appreciated. A little over a week ago, I had the opportunity to thank my family and staff for their support and efforts, but I think it's important once more to publicly acknowledge the gift that is the Bartle staff. I witness on a daily basis their concern and hard work to make the children successful both academically and emotionally. In all of my years at Bartle, I have seen the staff overrepresented in seeking out workshops to expand their skills. They even created their own professional book study groups. Year after year, I am impressed to see them initiate summer team meetings to prepare for the next upcoming year. They do not do these things because they're asked to. They do it out of their desire to be the best they can be for their students. So I thank all of you for allowing me to grow professionally and to lead your school. Thank you.
For our second retirement, I'd like to introduce the new Irving School principal, Kelly Wysozansky, to speak about Ellen Krant.
Good evening, everyone. Ms. Krant has been an English as a second language teacher at Highland Park for ten years. When speaking with her colleagues, they said that she always looked to improve her program. She actually enrolled in a music class at Rider Westminster College so that she could infuse music into her classroom to make the students feel a little bit more comfortable. When I asked some students to tell me some things that they do and they like to do with her in class, one student said she played games with us. Another student said that they loved when she colored with them. And finally, one student said she lets me eat in class. And if you work with four, five, and six-year-olds, you know that eating is important, and that's a big deal. We thank Ms. Krant for her dedication to Highland Park, and we wish her well in her future endeavors. She will be missed.
For the third retirement, I'd like to introduce Lauren Fraser to speak about Vicki Potabekie.
Unfortunately, Vicki is not here, so she's not going to hear all the wonderful things I have to say about her, but Vicki's been in Highland Park for thirty-three years. And she started out as a phys ed health teacher, and it's really through Vicki's efforts and her partnership with Maurice Elias that led to our social decision-making program in Highland Park. It's a very big part of Bartle School, it's part of Irving School, and to some extent, part of the middle school. Vicki had the opportunity to train scores of staff. As new people came in, she trained, and then she trained one-on-one when necessary. Fourteen years ago, or a little before that, Vicki got a new certification, and that was as guidance counselor. And so she took on that role, but before she did, in the summer leading into her first year, she was on an interview committee, and she's really to blame for me being hired in this district. She was on that committee. And then our very first year, we shared the office together, which was a great experience. She's counseled students on loss, on friendship making, on emotional regulation over the years. I can't even begin to guess how many children she's impacted with her efforts, and parents as well. She's not above meeting one-on-one with a parent to help them understand how to do their job a little bit differently, and a little more effectively. She's also mentored well over a hundred Rutgers interns, whether they were the social problem-solving interns that came for a semester, or the year-long counseling interns. She served as their mentor. She is Bartle's 504 coordinator and the dreaded test coordinator, but she always brings a little levity to the occasion. She'll send out a daily poem to the staff to try to keep their spirits up as we review day after day. One day down, four to go. Vicki's big shoes to fit, despite her small stance. She has big shoes to fill, rather, and I wish whoever takes over for her the best, but I know that Vicki is going to start a whole new career. Vicki never stopped learning. She continued to get degrees all the way up till, I think, about a year ago, when she -- and now she is teaching at college, and I think she's going to start her own counseling. She's just a powerhouse. And so we will miss her at Bartle School, I know, but we'll get her to come and visit. Maybe she and I'll come together. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to introduce Mike Lassiter to speak about Julie Klemowitz.
I watched Ms. Klemowitz go, "Oh," as I was introduced to speak about her, but I have nothing but good words to share about Ms. Kay, as all of her students affectionately call her. She has worked in our district for thirty-six and a half years, serving the community as a health and physical education teacher. If you take a look at her, she is the epitome of how good exercise and healthy living keeps you young. She has been a coach of gymnastics, tennis, track, cheerleading, and all-around sportsmanship and good manners in our students. She has also taught teen PEP, our sex education advocacy program, which empowers high school-age students to share information and present programs to their peers regarding their choices and the risks of those choices. Their T-shirts always cause quite a stir in the school each year. Ms. Klemowitz has taught at the high school and the middle school level and has impacted decades of Highland Park's children. All of her students express a great love for Ms. Kay, and I witnessed students run up to her to share their accomplishments and concerns with her many times. She is a source of inspiration for them and a great motivator. She has taught many of our current students' parents, even some of their grandparents. Ms. Kay is always quick to remind students of this when they make choices, they may not be so good. A call home from Ms. Kay carries a lot of weight. She has looked out for each of our students and has mothered many of them through difficult challenges. Ms. Klemowitz is also a tremendous colleague and a strong supporter of her fellow teachers. She provides support and encouragement to new and veteran teachers to keep them focused on the needs of our school. She willingly shares her opinion with her colleagues and the administration, and there have been many administrations that have come and gone while she's been here. Julie has outlasted them and remained a fixture in our school, providing her good-humored guidance to us all. She has also coordinated the HP Flower Fund for years in order to celebrate marriages, births, retirements, and to provide comfort during bereavements and illnesses. I don't know how we're going to give her her reward, because she runs the HP Flower Fund. Personally, she has watched over me like a mother as well. She was one of the first to greet me when I came to Highland Park. She always was there to offer me support when I faced challenges or disappointments. She provided me guidance when I became an administrator, and she told me her opinions freely when I became her supervisor. I have been to her house many times over the years to celebrate with colleagues as we approached the holidays and the end of the year, and I remember her home in those celebrations fondly. I have gained much from knowing Julie Klemowitz for these twenty years, and I will miss her dearly. Enjoy your time with your family and friends, and congratulations on your retirement and whatever you do next.
Where's Jerry? Thank you. I'll just keep it short. I appreciate it. I love my time at Highland Park. It's ups and downs. There's tragedies, the great things that went on, but we pulled through. I don't want to spend too much time now. I'll come back later with my complaints, but I appreciate this, and I really truly enjoyed everything that's gone on in Highland Park. I feel passionate about what I've done. I think I made some kind of change in someone's life every day, and I hope that other people can do that, too. Thank you.
Okay, we're now moving forward to the Teacher of the Year award winners for each of the buildings, and I'd like to introduce Mrs. Wysozansky to speak about Helen Radke.
She moved spots. Now I see you. I see you. One of the first assemblies I attended when I came to Irving was our kindergarten living garden. Mrs. Radke had her guitar, and she was leading the kindergarten in a beautiful song. The students were engaged and happy, and I could tell she loved her job. When speaking to her colleagues, they mentioned that Mrs. Radke takes music very seriously. She is passionate about her music program and taught the children all different types of music. When asking the students about her, they were eager to share all their stories. Here are a few of them. I love Mrs. Radke because she taught me about music. I love Mrs. Radke because she teaches us about composers like Bach and Beethoven. I like music because of Mrs. Radke. This one was interesting. She taught us about cowboy music. Somebody else said Mrs. Radke is funny. She does a dinosaur dance with us. And finally, someone said Mrs. Radke is kind and the best teacher ever. Congratulations on this achievement in your career. We can't wait to hear the beautiful music you continue to create in Highland Park. Congratulations.
Mary, better known as May Lewis, has been in Highland Park and at Bartle for fourteen years, and I'm always amazed by her intellectual curiosity. She really has a true desire to grow, and she's one of those people that initiated some of those book study groups. She often works with our most needy students, and she actually welcomed the opportunity to share her classroom with another teacher and became a collaborative classroom last year and continued to do so this year. This is a very isolated profession generally, and it's one teacher, twenty-two, some odd twenty-two students, so to open yourself up, expose yourself to another adult can be a little jarring, but May's always ready to try anything, and she did, and she found that she really enjoyed it. The important thing about May is that she knows how to take the lead in the classroom, and she understands how to take the supporting role as well, so it's a real collaboration. Not an easy thing to do for so many of us who are used to being the main attraction in the classroom. She uses data to guide her instruction and is really looking at each child as an individual to try to find what that child needs the most. She's served on committees as long as she's been in the district, but what always amazed me when I sat in on those committees is she's not afraid to ask the hard questions. She's not a shy person when it comes to that. She's very quiet normally, but she'll ask the very direct question, and I love that about May. She's helped the next generation as a cooperating teacher, taking on those student teachers. And finally, to quote one person that wrote about May in her nomination, it said, "May Lewis is the type of teacher who does wonderful things for children but doesn't ever call attention to herself." I think that's a really good description for May. And unfortunately, she cannot be here, but she did send me something and asked if I would read it to you, so I shall. She wrote, "I am very sorry I couldn't be here this evening, but unfortunately, I had to be in Ohio for a death in my family. I would like to express my sincere gratitude for this wonderful honor. I would like to thank the Bartle staff and especially the third grade team, Josh, Barbie, Lauren, and Danielle, for their innovative teaching ideas and ongoing support. I'd like to send out a special thanks to Karen Cox, my teaching partner, for seeing things in our students that I don't always notice. She shows me how to be a better teacher and a better person every day." So congratulations, May. I hope you can hear me in Ohio.
Okay, and I'd like to bring up Mr. Lassiter to speak about the award winner for the middle school, Henry Dykman.
Henry Dykman is incredibly worthy of this honor of Teacher of the Year for the middle school. He is the essence of what a history teacher is about. I've observed his class numerous times over the past five years, and I am always impressed by how engaging his stories of history and culture can be. Oftentimes, I've stayed longer than I probably should have, listening to those stories. I have watched his students literally hang on his every word when he recounts the tales of knights, warlords, and other cultural information about medieval Europe, Africa, China, Southwest Asia, and Japan. Mr. Dykman's classroom showcases his life as an educator. He hand painted a map of these regions on his wall, so he can refer to it often for the students and to provide students geographical context for what they study. He creates his own cartoons and comic books to provide a visual story of history, and the drawings he does on his whiteboard are amazing as well. His classroom is easily spotted from the outside of the middle school, one of the only ones you can spot from a distance because of the Chinese dragon he painted on the window. This is washed off each year and recreated painstakingly in the fall. Mr. Dykman not only engages his students through his powerful gift of storytelling, they research throughout the year, collaborate in debates and group assignments, and create their own history with personal projects like the coat of arms they developed for their annual shield project. It was a lot of fun for me seeing our middle school cafeteria fill up with a hundred and thirty middle school students waving their shields around. He has also recently filled his classroom with all of his World War II artifacts and memorabilia, along with student docents he trained to transform Room 206 into a living museum dedicated to the history of this critical time in world history. The students marvel at the exhibit as they are led through it by students who recount the purpose and meaning of each artifact from memory, and we're talking of hundreds of artifacts that they all learn and are able to describe and explain to their peers. The students love Mr. Dykman. They love him for the passion he shows each day in his teaching. Henry's colleagues love him for the good man he is and the kind words and support he always gives to others. As an administrator, I respect and cherish -- oh, geez, no, I love him, too, because he strives to continually improve his craft and listens intensely to suggestions and critiques in order to grow as an educator. Henry will never be satisfied with a status quo. He always wants to do more for his students and the school. One step into his classroom, and you would see that he fills every square inch of it with everything he possibly can to make history come alive in Highland Park Middle School.
Okay, next, I'd like to bring up Nicole Adams to speak about the High School Teacher of the Year award winner, Todd Kruger.
Good evening. So great teachers are change agents. They seek to form meaningful relationships with students. They seek to penetrate the rough exterior. Sometimes that's discontent. Sometimes that is that they're not engaged, and sometimes that they're just stubborn. Mr. Kruger is that teacher. His students refer to him as that teacher. His students refer to him as a cool, funny guy who makes learning fun every day. His colleagues refer to him as someone who is dependable, someone who is team player, and someone who is always, always looking out for what is in the best interest of his students. I contacted Dr. Williams, and he wanted me to tell you, Mr. Kruger, that he has watched you evolve as an educator over time, and you are so deserving of this honor, and that he wants you to continue to be a light for new teachers. Your enthusiasm, your passion for education shines through every day, and I couldn't agree more. So it is a pleasure to recognize you with this honor tonight. You are so deserving, so appreciated, and so worthy, and we thank you for all you do for our children every single day. Thanks a lot, Mr. Kruger.
The next two people that will be recognized are not teachers, they are students. And we have a little thank you to Elena Weisman, who stepped out, and to Anna Milatich, who are our two student reps to the Highland Park Board of Education. Anna and Elena have come to every meeting. They haven't stayed through to the end of every meeting, but they have really made some very positive contributions. We thank them especially for their information that they've been able to bring regarding the things that students are thinking about, the things that students are participating in, and a lot of the feedback about what's happening in the school. So I want to congratulate them. I also want to announce that Elena will be going to Brown University next year and that Anna will be going to Brandeis University next year. So without further ado, our two student reps.
The last recognition, is William John here? Would you like to come on down? So we wanted to recognize your son for being the 2014 U.S. Chemistry Olympiad. It's a great honor for the district.
And then just one final recognition again. The next year, student representatives will be Annie McCrone and Vivek Pudri. So if we could just give them a round of applause, we'll be seeing them.
Well, Dan, if you don't -- I was gonna say, if you don't mind, I'd like to add my two cents into this little event tonight. Ms. Kay. Tonight's very special for all of us. I want to congratulate everybody retiring. But like the people who have come up today, there have been a number of people who have had an impact on many people's lives within this district, Ms. Potabekki being one of them and Ms. Kay being another one. I'm going to start the story by quickly telling you something that you may not know, but I certainly remember, and it's something that I think anybody who has experienced something tragic like the JFK assassination or the Martin Luther King assassination remembers where they were when that happened. I remember where I was when September 11th happened. I was in your classroom in health. So while you and I, you might not remember that, that's something that I remember, and whenever asked me, and for years to come, I'll be able to tell that story. While that's not something that you personally did, there have been a number of things post-graduation and during school where I know I'm not the only ones who has experienced this, where you've had a measurable impact on their lives for the last 20, 50, 40, 30, 10, 2 years, whatever it be. And that can't be taken away from anybody, and that's something that needs to be said to everybody about the great person that you are. And lastly, I can't wait to share a drink with you at the Marlin. To this day, one of the best parts about getting people down to LBI is that I get to say, "Ms. Kay lives four blocks away from us," and my friends come down in droves just because they have a chance to hang out with or see her. So congratulations. I'm sure I'll be spending more time with you at the beach, and thank you for everything from me and from all the graduates.
Okay, so we are going to go to the board committee reports. Claire?
Yes, the curriculum committee did not meet tonight. And from -- oh, is that it? That's all I say, right?
You can describe.
If you look at the agenda, there is -- oh, I'm very excited about number two. Somebody was asking before about ELL and Sheltered English. That's exactly what this group does. Number two, the Language and Literacy Associates. And I just had training by these two women in New Brunswick as part of my professional development, and it was the best professional development I have ever had sponsored by my school district. So I'm thrilled that this was already in the works. So that is very exciting. The model they are teaching, it's called Shelter Instruction. It's really basically PSYOP, but Pearson owns PSYOP now. They can't say PSYOP because they don't work for Pearson, but it uses a lot of those materials. And what I love about it is it highlights best practices that work for all children. So it's really not just for English language learners, it's for all students and helping to make teaching and learning accessible to all students. You can see there's other professional development items and curriculum writing, summer curriculum, teen center summer programs, more summer programs, and I believe that's it.
Okay, is there any discussion on the curriculum items?
I just had a quick question about two and three. I didn't get a chance to go back and look, but I do recall there was a -- two or three meetings ago, we approved another chunk of professional development from the Staff Development Workshop Inc. of Lakewood. And at that time, I had asked if part of our professional development for next year is also going to be teacher-led. And no, I feel like the response last time was that what we had approved a couple of meetings ago was kind of going to be the extent of us contracting out for professional development, and now we're contracting out for another $30,000 or so. Are we kind of at the end of that now, and some of the other professional development's going to be teacher-led?
So like we were talking about earlier during the board goals, you're talking about these are the major ones that we've contracted for the professional development days within the district. So the ones of a few weeks, the last ones were 1314, this is 1450. And like I explained, all of the things that are building level are teacher-led, are in conjunction as far as with the building principal and the school improvement team.
So more the -- I'm sorry, were you knocked down? I don't want to cut you off. So more of the building level stuff is going to be more teacher-driven, and then more of the district-wide stuff is going to be more consultant? Is that the -- or am I not understanding?
That's what we've done as far as the plan for next year. That's correct.
And would we look towards having -- I mean, I'm just asking out of curiosity, would we look towards student or teacher-driven district professional development as well, or is that kind of the foreseeable plan?
We identify what the needs are, and then we schedule it accordingly. Anytime that you have somebody within the district that you can do a trainer model, that's obviously preferred because you have practitioners that are working within the population doing it. So that's always the preferred model. Again, this is something that, as with many things that we've discussed, we haven't had a plan in place. We're doing foundational items. This is, again, the district portion of it. The 23 meetings that we discussed earlier, those will be things that you would expect to see teacher-led, that would be directly impacted based on the things and the feedback that we receive from the buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the curriculum items? Catherine, could we have the finance committee report?
Yep, the finance committee did not meet tonight. Let me draw your -- well, let me talk about some report items. The ROD grant update. There was a project kickoff meeting last week with the architect and the contractor. Probably there's going to be enough delay in actually making these windows that the project will extend into the fall and the work will be done after school, during after-school hours. The custodial maintenance and landscaping services proposals will be opened on June 18th, and recommendations should be coming to the board on the July 21st meeting. For agenda items, item number eight is the TEMCO extension, the one-month extension that we spoke about at the last meeting. Items nine and 10, the computers, these computers are replacing outdated units which are not able to run the current software program and to provide all CST members necessary computers. Items 11 and 12 are referring to Chromebook cards needed for middle and high school use. Item number 13 is the firewall filter VPN appliance that will replace an existing unit that needs to be replaced. Item number 14 is the balcony seating we've also spoken about in the last couple of meetings. It's being purchased through the Middlesex Regional Co-op bid. Any other work that's going to be done in that balcony will probably be quoted on the agenda for the July 21st meeting. Again, hopefully it'll be done this summer. Items number 20 and 21 are standard year-end motions. I'm just going to read this from Linda. "Emergency reserve is being replenished to cover future health benefit cost increases. Transfer to capital reserve was budgeted in part during the budget process in order to fund the Bartle window replacement project, and the remainder is a high estimate advised upon by the auditors who were in the building a couple of weeks ago to avoid any excess surplus. And based upon any remaining current year savings, we do not anticipate that we will have nearly enough to hit the threshold. It is up to that amount as a safeguard." Item number 26 is an emergent repair. We did not have necessary indirect storage tanks for our hot water system in the middle and high schools, and it's a health issue. And item number 29 is the carpet replacement in the middle school, high school media center, which is desperately in need of replacement, also being contracted through the Middlesex Regional Co-op bid.
Good. That is good. We talked about that last year. Is there any discussion of the finance items?
Yeah, I just want to talk about 20 and 21. The number is not going to come close to $750 or $100,000 for these two reserves. We don't have anything close to that. This is a total normal motion, and it is a safeguard. But if we can get any money into capital reserve, I would be happy, and it would be needed, but I'm not too confident about that at all. We do this every year.
Is there any other discussion of the finance items? Anne, could we have the personnel committee report?
Yeah, do you want to talk about number one first?
You can do the -- anything that you'll discuss, and then...
Okay, well, the personnel committee did not meet tonight. Linda, do I read in the correction now? Okay, so a number of items, because we're at the sort of that time of the year for personnel where there's an awful lot of hiring going on. There is a new interim director of educational services so that we can take our time and conduct a thorough search for the next person to permanently hold that position. We have a new Spanish teacher at Bartle School, and I need to make a correction to number four on the agenda. Rather than step one, she will be starting at step nine, and her salary will be $62,638. So if you could make that correction. We have a new physics teacher, a number of new positions, and a couple of maternity leaves, and -- and we -- I'm sorry. So that's about it.
Okay. Is there any discussion of the personnel items? So I will -- I'd just like to address number one in the personnel and communication report. We will not be moving item number one. We will not in the future be moving this gentleman for this position. I think that actually might be the first time I've said something, and people have clapped, by the way. We're not going to discuss the item, and of course, because this is a personnel matter, we will not be commenting on it. If you'd like to make public comment with regard to this agenda item, you can feel free, but we will not be discussing it. We will not be responding to anything related to this item, but it will not be moved. And I also do want to just note number 10, item number 10, the resignation of Michelle Callis. Michelle has done some excellent curriculum work here, and we wish her the best in her new position. Is there any other discussion of the personnel and communication items? Adam, policies?
The policy committee met last week, two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks ago, and discussed Ms. Berkowitz's changes to two policies. The policy committee, by a two-to-one vote, rejected the changes, and we have no changes to report or a policy for first reading tonight. Ms. Berkowitz, I believe, will bring it up during closed session, and we can discuss it further at that time.
During closed?
I'm sorry, during committee -- no, during new business, or old business.
Sometime later.
But Adam, can you just clarify what was discussed at the policy meeting?
Yeah, we discussed a number of changes. I don't know if you want to explain the changes. We discussed two primary changes. One, making a three-minute limit to all public comment. And the second, ending board meetings at, I believe, 11 o'clock by policy.
I thought what was decided by the two-to-one vote was to not bring it up for first reading.
Well, we're not recommending a policy change is what the vote was.
But what Adam said to you was that you were free to bring -- because you were concerned...
I understand. I just wanted to clarify. I thought it was about whether or not we could bring it up for first reading.
Well, if the board votes for it later, then it can be, that can be first reading.
Right. So the committee has chosen not to bring it up for first reading. Any board member has the opportunity to present...
I'm just clarifying that I wanted it brought up for first reading.
Right.
That's what was voted against.
Right. Well, we, yes, we did not, besides first reading, we did not see that there was a need for a change, and that's why there was no need for a first reading. But we're welcome to have more discussion upon it, and if need be, we'll address that later.
Is there any other discussion of the policies? Okay, at this time, the Highland Park Board of Education, welcome -- I'm sorry, Darcy.
With the public records one, hadn't we talked about it being formatted differently so that we could see what the changes were, other than just the folding? Or did we agree to not?
I thought we agreed that it was too much, and that it was pretty much...
The public records policy?
Oh, you're not talking about what they were talking about?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
The one policy was almost a total rewrite and to put strike-ins. Things were moved into different places, and it was just...it was too difficult to actually show bolds and strike-throughs. So we did present to you the old one so you could put it side-by-side with the new one at the last meeting. So there were no changes at that time, and then therefore we brought it forward for second reading tonight.
Okay.
And as we discussed, the only substantive change to the policy was basically the inclusion of email Oprah requests? And then everything else is just statutory?
Right. Well, it's all statutory Oprah-required language with regard to, you know, the costs and the way you can disclose the information or make the information public.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion of the policies? This time, the Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. I would like to make a motion as per bylaw 0167 to limit the length of each public comment to three minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Linda?
Ms. Verissa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Chimerusti?
No.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
No.
Mr. Borden?
Yes.
Kimberly Bevelacqua Crane, President of HPEA, speaking as President of HPEA. First, I would like to applaud the recommendation of contract renewal for teacher Barbara Kausch. This action illustrates that the administration heard our concerns about her non-renewal and took into consideration the association's request for investigation into the issues that deal specifically with our members' employment. We would...we also appreciate the board's decision to continue to investigate options for the high school principal. This is the last board meeting before the summer intermission and prior to our...and the one last one prior to our next contract mediation on Thursday, June 19th. We have asked our membership to join us tonight, as they will on Thursday, to show their support and interest in moving forward with the contract settlement. We also felt it would be productive for our members to view the board's goal-setting process and provide constructive input on your progress during public comment if they wish. I would like to talk about our members for a moment. We have an incredibly knowledgeable, dedicated, and hard-working group of professional educators on staff in Highland Park. These are people that I am not only honored to represent but also fortunate to work alongside. These are employees who come in early, stay late, take work home, attend after-school activities, and plan together over breaks, weekends, and the summer unpaid to support their students and the greater school community. Some of them are in the audience right now, working on grades as I speak. There is truly not enough time in the day to accomplish what is necessary. To give extra time to their work is the norm among our members and not the exception. I have worked in districts where it was an exception, and at 3:30 you could hear the crickets chirping. Not all educational professionals hold themselves to the standard of excellence our staff expects they should. Many would like to, but their districts have crammed more students, more instructional time, more test prep, more administrative directives into their day, to the point where everything that is not Common Core-directed must be jettisoned because we have reached the tipping point where something has to give. Until someone figures out a way to bend the space-time continuum, we will continue to only have so much time. As educators, we appreciate efficiency. We understand time management, and we despise ineffective practice and programs that lack rigor. We are hard on ourselves and each other when a lesson doesn't go as planned or a workshop wasn't presented according to our standards, but we also recognize the need for balance. We set high expectations for our students with the realization that they too have limits, and it is imperative to their education that we understand where their learning stops and where the overburdening begins. We have been through much this year, well beyond what has been asked of us in the past. We have been presented with new and challenging deadlines and have met them. We have said goodbye to the majority of our administrators and welcomed new ones with an open mind. We have restructured our association out of necessity after the elimination of our president and vice president with the goals of communication, collaboration, and community outreach as our driving force. Most of us consider Highland Park our second home, and for many of us, it is home. The investment that you have from your employees goes far beyond the minutes of the workday or contractual obligation. Giving our students above and beyond of our time, expertise, and dedication is not something that we do because our contract says so. This is something that we do because we support each other, we are invested in this community, and we care very deeply about your children because we're seven days, seven hours out of the day. They are our children too. So we adjourn for...as we adjourn for the summer, please keep in mind that we are anxiously awaiting a settled contract, a clear schedule, and solidified job assignments so we may continue to plan in a manner that best supports our students and the educational goals of our district. We trust that you will do everything in your power to work with us and to provide us with these essentials as soon as possible. We have met all of the challenges that we have been presented. We will continue to do so. We are the perpetual motion behind the excellence of education in Highland Park schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Good evening. Denise May Friar, 314 Wayne Street. First of all, I commend you for withdrawing number one on the personnel. A little due diligence would realize why you shouldn't hire this individual. A little search by us, we realized he's bounced all over creation from one job to another. A little Googling leads you to see that on his Twitter account, he follows a site called Maxim, which has pictures of young women in their twenties in immodest clothing maybe or bikinis. Another one of the hashtags that he...one of the other things he follows is called "Hot Topic at Noon," which is a bunch of young women who upload pictures of themselves for the viewing of whomever, including this person. On Facebook, there he is hanging out with a picture with a glass of wine or some kind of booze. I mean, I'm not objecting to people drinking, but really, I think teachers have been...had problems with this in other school districts. So I commend you for doing that because our teachers and our students deserve you hiring people who are worthy, not people who might be associated with Mr. Capone, who graduated from William Wilmington University with him when he graduated or around the same timeframe. I don't know if they're friends. I don't know. I don't care. I just question it. Anyway, so on to something else related to the degradation of women. I think that the policy regarding clothing in the schools, the middle school and the high school, should be addressed and discussed. It has come to my attention that a female student in the high school was humiliated by being told she looked sexy or something. There is a policy going on right now. My children seem to be confused about it in the middle school. I would like you to discuss it. Regarding the ending at 11 o'clock, I really hope that you put the kibosh on that. I understand Ms. Berkowitz's desire to end at a civilized hour, but, you know, you shouldn't cut people off. And I hope, going back around to the principle again, I really sincerely hope that you choose somebody more appropriate. I know you're not going to answer this. I would like to know who's on your committees and how are the committees selected? Again, I know you're not going to answer that, but I'm throwing it out there. I think we all deserve better than your choosing, including the superintendent. Thank you.
Elena, can I just...Elena, you had made the comment about the dress code. Can you just talk about that a little bit? Because I don't know anything about it and I'm not sure that the board is too aware of what's been going on.
Yeah. Basically, there's been a series of flyers that have been put up. They've been anonymous, and they haven't been approved by Mr. Soto or anyone else. And it's not really clear what students put them up, but they basically complained about the dress code. And it said that certain girls in the school did not feel comfortable with it, along those lines.
In the negative or in the positive? Right. Do they want it more liberal or do they want it more conservative?
They want it more liberal. I don't know if Mr. Soto...have you seen them?
Yes, I have.
Can you address it maybe?
Has it changed...has the dress policy changed in the last ten years, five years, three years, two years?
No.
No.
So we've been...we've been trying to address the issue of the dress code where, you know, many adults feel that some of the students are dressing inappropriately to come to school. And as a result, we've been seeing a lot of signs about, you know, their discomfort and, you know, just complaining about the dress code. Quite frankly, many of the signs are very inappropriate. And so as soon as they come up, I've asked the custodial staff to take them down. And so clearly, we need to address the dress code quickly.
Yeah. But I don't...so you...the signs are going up that it's...they want it more liberal. The staff, I believe, is saying they want it more conservative. I don't understand what the issue is with the president of dress code.
Well, so I have to tell you, this has always been an issue for me. The dress code is much more onerous for girls in the high school than it is for boys. Much more of the dress code addresses what girls can and can't wear than what boys can and can't wear. And so to me, that is sort of a basic inequity. You know, I understand the need to sort of...you know, kids can't come to school dressed like they're going to the beach, but there does need to be some equity in the dress code, which there is not right now.
You're absolutely correct. I agree. And that's been one of the concerns addressed by many of the girls. And, you know, certainly I've witnessed that also. So there needs to be some type of equity amongst, you know, the kids.
So maybe the policy committee can meet and discuss the dress code.
Absolutely, yeah.
Well, is the dress code in a policy or is it in a student handbook?
Actually, no. The dress code is actually in the handbook.
It's a handbook.
So maybe this summer, we should look at that and try to get some feedback about, I mean, before you guys go, about the experience that you've had and maybe give some of that feedback to Mr. Soto.
But no changes to policy should...or the handbook should be made without a board consultation?
I think some of the issues with the dress code too is just that it was never really enforced or addressed as much as it should be or as it has been. So maybe like that's, you know, not creating confusion, but it's just bringing like a lot of attention to it. Because while, I mean, I agree with Anne, there is a lot of inequities, but, you know, there's...you know, they still have to dress appropriate, but...
I mean, we've got to pick up...we have to pick our battles.
Well, exactly.
You know, is this really what we want to fight about?
Yes.
Well, it should be fair.
I agree with Anne, yeah.
It should be fair.
Right. It just needs to be fair, and it needs to be clear, and then it needs to be enforced.
Enforced.
And consistent. There's been no consistency. That's the word. There's been no consistency with it. So I think that that's what's, you know, all of a sudden just causing a little bit of uproar with the students.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Allison Salerno. I live at 66 Grant Avenue. Good evening and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about our family's experience with opting out of standardized tests, specifically the state biology competency test, a four-hour test that happened in May. I want to urge you to adopt a written policy on how to handle students who refuse standardized tests and to make sure that policy conforms to the Department of Ed's expectations. As part of that policy, please train your faculty and staff to respect the choices that families and children are making and to educate them that they should not be making negative comments to students who choose this route. I want to also say I appreciate Mr. Dietz and Ms. Chimerusti's understanding that this board needs a written policy on test refusals that respects students and complies with DOE expectations. Weeks before the test, my husband and I let Mr. Soto know our ninth grader would be refusing the test. We were advised that our son could either sit and stare for four days, the two days of testing, and the two days of makeup testing, or he could be absent for testing and sit and stare for two days of makeup testing while his classmates attended regular classes. When my husband and I talked to Mr. Soto, and Mr. Soto made it clear he was enforcing an unwritten policy that Mr. Capone and Ms. Callis had created, and he suggested we email her with our concerns about our son missing hours of instructional time. We emailed her, and we never heard back. I come to you tonight to let you know about a May 6 memo from a county school superintendent in another part of our state. Again, this memo came out 15 days before the state bio test. It says in part, "The school district does not have to provide something else for the child to do. He or she should be in test setting, but this is a local decision." It also says, "If the child whose parent is opting out comes in during makeup week, you do not have to test the child." Okay? Mr. Ross and Mr. Sherman have made it clear they do not want the board to adopt a written policy for test refusal, so it's not to encourage children and their families to refuse these tests. This trend toward test refusal, however, is not going away. Next year's high school students will face nine separate testing days per park. I believe it's like in a six-week period. It is borderline malfeasance for this board to encourage a situation where my child and other children are denied access to instructional time in an effort to send a punitive political message to the children's parents. My husband and I are still puzzled how forcing our son to miss classes, including an important master corral rehearsal, and an end-of-unit test on To Kill a Mockingbird meets the requirements of his IEP. Finally, I would like to say that your resolution this spring expressing concern about standardized tests is empty rhetoric. My husband and I will remember on Election Day how this board allowed and perhaps even encouraged Mr. Capone and Ms. Callis to deny our son and other students access to academic classes.
Hi. My name is Anna Perey, and I live at 344 Becker Street. I want to second everything that Ms. Crane said on behalf of the teachers so eloquently and so movingly. I wish the board creates channels for talking to teachers because they are our more precious resource. And I hope that the conversation on communication continues, that, you know, distinction is made between disseminating information, which I think the district does very well, extremely well, and two-way communication. It's a very different process, and we absolutely need that two-way communication to be established. We would avoid a lot of conflicts, a lot of disagreements, a lot of lengthy board meetings if we had that type of setting. There was a pale attempt to do that in November where we were in the midst of a big conflict due to the riots. We had this strategic planning meeting. I didn't attend that meeting. I have read the summary. I fail to see the articulation between that strategic planning meeting and what I've heard refer several times in the earlier meeting as the strategic planning initiative. But Mr. Capone's vision 2020, I think I've also seen in the goal-setting part of the meeting, Mr. Capone's, I would say, personal agenda bleeding into the board's goals, its language being inserted into the board goals. I've also seen the board trying to revise that language by inserting, for instance, communication, which Mr. Capone kind of forgot about in his 2020 presentation. Anyways, I want to thank you as a board for being so patient with being a real pain as a community. It's our duty. We'll continue to do so. So, you know, it's in everybody's best interest to establish the best possible channels for communications. the best possible channels for communications. And I think that idea of having the shareholders' meetings, you know, in the process of revising the goals and the objectives is a great idea. Now, I want to point to an item in UBILOS that I would be happy if somebody read it. It's in UBILOS. It's called the 0134 Board Self-Evaluation. It's from January 2004. I want to make sure it's still active because I didn't see much of it in the meeting today. That might have happened in another meeting and I might have missed it. But I don't have time to read it all. I'll pass it around. I'll read the beginning and the end. It says, "The Board of Education is committed to the belief that every part of the school system in this district should be accountable to the public and that performance evaluation is essential to that accountability." And it ends like that, "The assessment of board members will be tabulated and presented for discussion at a regular meeting of the board in which the superintendent will be invited to participate. The board will formulate as appropriate goals and priorities that will serve to guide the board in the ensuing school year." So, thank you.
Thank you. Someone can just check...
I'm not a public speaker, but I promised my daughter I would do this.
If you just hold on one sec, because you do need to sign in and state your name and your address. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Carla Draper and I live at 126 Amherst Street. I'm here to talk about concussions. Concussions have a profound effect, not only on the person suffering with the symptoms, but also everyone surrounding them, including parents and family, coaches and teachers. And that is why I'm asking Mr. Capone and the board to think about implementing comprehensive education on concussions for coaches, teachers and staff. A concussion is a form of traumatic brain injury. It can be caused by a direct blow to the head or an indirect blow to the body. And more than 3 million concussions occur each year in the United States. Once a person has had a concussion, they are three times more likely to have another. It is especially important to understand the effects on children and adolescents as their brains are continuing to develop. Studies have shown that children who have had multiple concussions are more likely to suffer long-term neurological deficits. In the first weeks after the injury, most individuals experience physical symptoms such as headache, light and noise sensitivity, dizziness and fatigue, cognitive symptoms such as trouble with memory, concentration and fogginess, emotional symptoms such as anxiety, irritability and sadness. And one of the things we saw was a total personality change. Most people fully recover in three to six months. With individuals who have had previous concussions, it takes longer to recover. Up to 20% of concussion patients develop post-concussion syndrome, where the symptoms of the concussion can linger up to a year. This is the reason teachers and staff also need to be educated about concussions. The effect of a concussion is seen when a student exerts himself physically as well as cognitively. A concussion affects the brain's ability to function, including slowing processing speed, causing deficits in concentration and memory, deficiencies in attention and organization. Common classroom activities can exacerbate symptoms and slow recovery time. The fluorescent lights and noise in hallways alone during class changes can be unbearable. The focus on concussion recovery is usually return to play. We also need to focus on return to school. The first step is reduce cognitive activity. The second step, educate yourself and others about the effects of concussions. The third step is accommodate to assist recovery. And the fourth step is pace the student's full return to physical and cognitive activities. Effective concussion management is a group effort and I hope that as a district, we can continue to support our students in their recovery. And I'd like to thank Ms. Longo for her help and support and to all of Olivia's teachers for working with her. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Carla, if I could just say, my family and I wish you the best for Olivia's recovery.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Liebowitz. I live at 250 Grant Ave. I wanted to start by thanking everyone who helped out with this Saturday's annual Great Taste Event, a Great Taste of Music event. It was the sixth annual. It was a really wonderful evening. Thanks to the incredible music teachers, to the student volunteers and performers and of course, to everyone who attended, some board members. Thank you so much for being there. A lot of people, a lot of speakers at the board meetings often start with sort of their Highland Park history. And I've never felt compelled to do that, but for some reason, I do now. So, I've been involved with public school education in one way or another for over 30 years. We've lived in Highland Park for almost 25 years and I've been an active parent in the district since our oldest son started pre-K here 17 years ago. He's now about to be a senior at Rutgers and our younger son is just finishing his first year at the high school. There have been ups and downs with various aspects of our son's educational experiences here. The ups have been mostly due to the incredibly wonderful and talented teachers we have here in Highland Park. And there's a lot of them here tonight. Mrs. Patichal, Mr. Esteban, Ms. Marioni, Ms... Ah, Señora Gabriela, Tara Givenetti, oh gosh, Ms. Bopernik, Mr. Miladnik. Thank you guys so much. Really. I don't want to leave anybody out. Ms. Crane, Mr. Miladnik, Mr. Presti, thank you. We can't do this without you. And there have been some downs and I wanted to just talk about a couple of things. I'm not going to list all the specific concerns that I currently have. Many of them have been mentioned at these meetings throughout the course of this school year. But I do want to say that I care deeply about our school district and I am concerned about the state of things and some of the direction that we're taking. There are two recent events that are examples of the kinds of some of the concerns I have. One of them happened a few weeks ago at a board meeting and I haven't had a chance to get here to talk about it, but here I am tonight. One of the student representatives in their report asked, mentioned that their classmates were concerned that the high school principal had left and that there didn't seem to be anybody in charge in the building. What I was struck by was that neither the superintendent or any board member responded to the student's concern. The student's expression of concern was met with complete silence. There didn't seem to be any understanding that it would be important to offer an immediate response to the student rep. I wondered if this was really the example we want to be setting for our students and it seemed to me to be an illustration of the general lack of response that many of us felt throughout this past year. And the lack of response was to a student, which in my mind, made it even worse. In the end, it took an outcry from the public and staff before an interim principal was assigned to both of the buildings that were left principalless this year. And, you know, it just sort of makes me question the leadership that doesn't understand the need for that.
Ellen, just please be aware of the time. Thank you.
I may need somebody's three minutes. If somebody can give me that, please, thank you. I'm not going to be much longer. The second event concern I wanted to talk about had to do with the Item 1 on the Agenda and I really am glad to see that that's not happening. I wanted to say to Denise, who asked about the search committee, that, you know, the members of the search committee do not necessarily guarantee the result of the search. It has to do, in my opinion, much more with the search process as a whole. And I'd like to make some suggestions about search processes because I don't think they've gone very well in the recent past.
Ellen, if you could just...
I'm sorry?
If you could, your time is concluded.
Somebody give me three minutes, please. Won't be more than that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Takes time to name all the great teachers we have today. Sorry.
Rebecca Chapman Smith, 123 Magnolia Street.
Okay, so suggestions about search committee process. I'd like to suggest that there should be a minimum of two people screening initial candidate resumes. I'd like to suggest that members of the search committee should include a representative from the board's personnel committee. I'd like to suggest that search committee members should be informed if a candidate has worked with or has any connection to a current district employee. I'd like to suggest that the hiring schedule, whenever possible and appropriate, should include overlap time with the previous administrator. And I believe that this arrangement has not been made with the outgoing and incoming Bartle principal, which quite honestly, I find to be outrageous. And boy, we've come full circle because I was on the search committee for Lauren Frazier. That worked out pretty well. I'd also suggest that no candidate should be brought forward to the committee who clearly does not have the appropriate skills or experience for the job they're applying for. I don't know why that would happen. I'd like to suggest that candidates must be carefully vetted. And lastly, hiring the right candidate must always, always take precedence over expediency. Problematic searches lead to problematic situations and employees. The recommendation, I'm going to skip that part. We took care of that, thankfully. But with the challenges we are facing in our district, we need the most excellent leaders and staff and we really have to do better. I'm going to skip all this because we took care of that. So, to the board members, I know that you all love our town and love our schools as much as everyone else in this room. So I'm just going to end with a question, with two questions. I'd like to know first, what the current plan is? Are we reopening the search? What's the timeline? What are the next steps to replacing the high school principal? And lastly, another question is, I'd like to know where we are in the review of the superintendent's contract, what the timeframe is for that, how that happens and when we'll hear back about that, when the public will hear back about that. So thanks so much to the board members again for being on the board. It's not an easy job, I know. I really appreciate the time you give to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen.
And I would appreciate answers to those two questions. The timeframe for what's happening with the search? Is it going to be reopened? And about Mr. Capone's contract coming up for renewal?
Well, so the timeframe, so we will be continuing the high school's principal search. We're not sure exactly of what the next steps will be, but we, you know, that position is still open and we'll be taking the steps to fill that position with a qualified candidate, hopefully soon. But obviously, as you said, it's important to get someone who is the best candidate for the position, not someone who's just available or can begin soon. As for your second question, there is no public discussion of the superintendent's evaluation. That's something that is discussed by the board.
That's not what I asked. I asked when the process is happening and how that works.
The process is according to the contract and, you know, that information is kept within the board and the superintendent.
Okay, and also, I hope that, you know, and I'll be happy to give it to you in hard copy, that you'll think about some of the suggestions I made about the search process.
If you could send it to us, that'd be great.
I sure will.
Thank you, Ellen.
Jason Marsh, 418 South Fourth Avenue. I'd like to read from an email that came out this week, this past week, pardon me, from Bartle Paperless. In part, it says, "The superintendent's office has postponed the assigning of teachers to classes until after the school year ends. The staff has worked together to build next year's classes without the consideration of who the teacher might be and that information will be sent on to central administration." I will also send along the input I received from parents that might impact placement. It is my understanding that you will be informed of your child's teacher for the 2014-2015 school year later this summer. My question is, what does the central administrative office know about my child and the other children in the class in terms of assignment of teachers that the principal, the guidance counselor, Ms. Simone? What does the central administrative office know that the principal doesn't?
You can be rest assured, Jason, I will not be assigning teachers or students to classes.
Okay. Who will be, please?
At the point that we're ready to release that information, okay, we've had input from the staff, okay? There are a new principal at Irving. There's a new principal coming in at Bartle and I believe it's appropriate to release those together. So at the point that it's done, that's when it'll be released.
So the principal who doesn't know any of the staff nor any of the children will be making those assignments?
As I said, when it's finished, it will be released.
Of course, it's absurd to think that the new principal is going to make all of the assignments. So the teacher input, you know, the work that's been done is obviously going to be the most important thing that is used in those assignments.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Thank you, Jason.
I have to say, I'm still perplexed. The question, the answer, they don't jive.
When the schedules are done, they'll be released.
But we're breaking with what has traditionally been done in Bartle, which is the teacher assignments are out with the report cards.
We didn't say that.
That is what has been said.
The question is, what does the statement mean in the email? I think that's the question. So what does it mean that they were sent to the central office?
I actually don't know why that was sent out. That's not something that, you know, there is no placement being made from that standpoint. Again, we're holding this information and we're looking at the programs that are district-wide that are overlaid and making sure that staffing, because of the changes that have occurred and that within the new schedule, because it has to be coordinated between Irving and Bartle, that it's done at the same time.
Okay, so Bartle is not scheduled... Okay, so Bartle is not scheduled on its own because there are shared staff, and so both Irving and Bartle placements have to be considered together?
Correct.
Okay.
So this is a result of schedule changes? Is that what I heard you say? That it's the teacher schedule changes?
There's a staffing component, there's a scheduling component, there's a district component as far as coordinating the schedules between the two buildings. Okay? When all of those things are worked out, then the information will be released. Like I said, I will not be placing kids in classes.
Well, the translation would be then that there are going to be changes, because if there were not changes, we would be working under the same process that has existed previously. So am I to assume that you're saying there will be changes to the schedule and to the staffing?
With class sizes and enrollment, they change every year.
And we've already talked about this, of moving to common planning, and we've talked about that it's going to be set up differently, and that we were more efficient with staffing. This was covered months ago.
We want to make sure every staff has a full load. Is that pretty much...
This has more to do with sharing staff between the two buildings and providing common planning for staff. We've discussed this.
Thank you.
Just to follow up, yes, can I speak again? It's just a follow-up question. I want to make sure...
You have to state your name again.
Oh, yeah, it's written. I wrote it. Anna Perre, me again, 344 Bartle. It's just to follow up. I want to make sure that it is legal. The information we provided, the parents' kind of profiles, that we evaluated the needs of our children as far as we could tell, that information was not meant for central administration. Sometimes you say things about your children that are very personal, and we trust there's things you can tell your teacher, I mean, they go to the classroom teacher, they go to the principal. We trust the principal that we know with whom we have a relationship. We trust the teachers to make the best decisions, and we trust them to keep this information confidential. This information should remain protected to some extent. It is not meant, people brought that, those, people gave that information under the assumption that it will, they will not warn that it would be read by central administration. They might say things about the teacher in a certain context that will be misread, that can be used against the teachers. Okay, so I'm just telling you, in my opinion, the district should now, should redo, recall all those worksheets that we were given, and ask parents, tell parents what this information is going to be used for, and ask them to redo. I know it's not realistic, but it's what, you can't just change the rules in the middle of the process. That's all I'm saying, okay?
I don't think anybody's saying that.
Well, we just changed the rules in the middle of the process. Maybe it was discussed at the meeting, we didn't understand what was going on. Okay. I also think it's irresponsible that all these results in teachers learning, you know, in the middle of the summer, what grade they're going to be teaching. I mean, how can they prepare efficiently to teach if they don't know until the end of July or maybe August what grade, in which building they're going to be teaching? I really think this is irresponsible. It's never happened.
Are there any grade level changes for next year that you can describe for us? Because you're saying a lot of things, and what you're saying is not accurate.
Okay, probably.
Right? You're basically saying that the teachers have had no input, and that that is the major change in the process, and that's just not true.
Not at all.
I think what the superintendent's saying is that there's another level that's being looked at in order to provide common planning time for the teachers at Bartle. In order to do that, the schedule has to be looked at so that the people that are shared between Irving and Bartle, that their schedules can be aligned so that all the teachers in Bartle have common planning time. And so the teacher recommendations for which students will go to which teachers, it's not like that goes out the window. The teachers know those students the best. And so that is the primary thing that, can I, please?
Yeah, he's explaining.
The primary thing that, you know, guides those placements is exactly that. The only thing that's being overlaid then is to ensure that, you know, if you can have, let's say, 95% or something of those recommendations can be followed in order to provide, you know, common planning time and, you know, the proper balance between the shared staff, then that's what's going to happen. And to misconstrue it that way, in the sense that there's no teacher involvement and that everything needs to be recalled, I don't think that that's fair, and it's not accurate.
Except I didn't say that. I'm very, I think Mrs. Fraser's statement said that the staff has constructed the groupings. I've confirmed this information. I know the staff, the teachers have made the groupings, but I know that central administration, they have not assigned the teachers. I know that central administration will be assigning the teachers. The result of this is that teachers won't know what class, what grade they're teaching until, you know, the very end of the summer. Therefore, they cannot prepare adequately.
I mean, that assumption is just not true.
It's not true.
No.
So when will, let me ask you, when will teachers know what they're teaching? When will they be informed of their teaching responsibilities? What's the date?
Again, there's a scheduling component.
Okay.
There's a staffing component, okay? We've had changes as far as what staffing exists. When you have people going back into positions, okay, you have to take into into consideration what their certifications are. So you have to consider movement. You have to consider where those people are as far as what their certificates say. So as soon as we can get that out, that's when it'll be released. I don't have a timeline. I'm not going to say it's going to be done by this deadline. Okay? As soon as it's released, it'll be released.
And we're not done hiring also.
This is the same process that you go through every year.
Every year.
You look at those components. The difference being this year is again, making sure that Irving and Bartle are on the same schedule, that they have common planning for those teachers, and that the specialists are shared. That's the difference.
Thank you. I understand the perspective of the administration. I think you should acknowledge a little bit the perspective of the parents.
And I'm not looking at kids' folders. I'm not looking at assignments, okay? I don't know why she sent out that email. I can't speak to that email.
Well, thanks, thanks. We're glad that email was sent. I mean, the last thing we would want to know is, the last thing, I mean, just imagine if we learn in September how kids have been, how teachers have been assigned to...
It's not going to be September.
No, okay.
I think, you know, Ellen spoke to this, I don't know where she went. Ellen Leepowitz spoke to this a couple, a few meetings ago. You know, more information keeps anxiety down, less information increases anxiety. I think that's what we have. Parents received this very odd email about their students' placements. Bartle parents were expecting, as has been, I mean, you might say this doesn't always happen, but I think in the recent few, in recent past, end of the year, you receive your child's teacher assignments, lack of information increases anxiety. It's that simple.
It's that simple.
For many years, they came right before school started.
Right. I used to get mine in August.
But, but there's a difference between, this is now how we're going to do things from here out, to just an odd email comes out, things aren't happening the same way, things are going to be... It created anxiety.
It's true.
If something very concrete went out and said, "We're still working on the schedules, this will be to you by, you know, we're hoping by X date," instead, a bunch of questions came out in an email that weren't answered, and now people are coming, and the answers aren't much clearer. So you're asking parents in a year full of a lot of unanswered questions to now go home with a lot of still what to me is unanswered questions about where their kid is going to be placed next year.
The answer is absolutely clear. When the process is complete, it will be done. It will be passed on to the parents. It's absolutely clear.
What answer do you want to give? Do you want to say the end of June? That's not true. August? That's not true either. It'll be as soon as it's done. It's a priority to get scheduling done, to get all the staffing in place. That's a priority. And when it's done, it'll be released.
Well, I have to say, when the message is delivered in that fashion, sir, it's very hard to take it seriously. This doesn't happen all the time.
What process? What would you like to define for them, Darcy? What do you want to define?
What I would like to define is a, even if it needs to be approximate timeline of when parents and students, because you now also have students who, for the last few years, remember that at the last day of school, they got their teacher assignments, and now they are being informed that they're not going to have their teacher assignments. So parents would like to know what to expect for themselves, and they would also like to be able to tell their children what they can expect.
What they can expect is not to have them at the end of the school year.
What?
That's not the same as knowing what to expect, not knowing what not to expect.
We don't have report cards either.
So you're basically saying, "We don't know. Sometime between now and the end of summer, teacher assignments will come out for Bartle." And that could even be the answer. At Irving, parents are accustomed to, "You don't get your assignments until the end of the summer." That would have been a perfectly reasonable response, I think, to say, "We're very sorry for a number of scheduling reasons. We're not prepared to give out class assignments at the end of this year. They will be given out by August 15th." Even if you just put a date on it when the information goes out, you decrease that anxiety because people know what to expect. Now you're just asking us to go with, "We don't know. You'll get them. Trust us."
I think that, I mean, I think the point is that when that email went out, the response or another email or something should have gone out that just said, I mean, I think Darcy's point is absolutely correct, that it really is just a question about how the information is presented. Due to, due to these pieces of...
That's twice, that's twice, twice one night.
Do, I mean, you know, you're in this process anew in this district, and so you have to sort of take stock of what people have expected in the past and how things have been done in the past, and whether they've been done well or not done well, you still have to be sensitive to that. And so this process of central offices taking over the scheduling process, which is what the email said, and that may or may not have been, you know, for whatever the reasons for that actually appearing in an email aside, you know, there is just that question of, "What does that mean?" And so when you look at what that means, it means that maybe parents are going to be, you know, upset about this because for some reason, they think that you're looking through their students' folders. When in reality, what it is, is you're actually trying to do a better job by making sure that the staff members have common planning time, that there are those kinds of things worked out so that teachers can have the best experience that they have, and the parent and the, you know, the teacher feedback regarding student placement is still honored. And to say that is a lot better than to not say it. And so I think that moving forward, it's that kind of information that the board is looking for in response to these kinds of things that either come up or in preemption of these kinds of things, so that we don't have to hear about them as missteps, right? But that we can think about the good things that are going on. The fact that you're going through this process right now with common planning time is by far the best thing that could be done for the teachers, by far, right, from an educational perspective. And if that means that student placement in classes has to be bumped back a month, so be it. Because at the end of the day, whether you get your kid's teacher at the end of June or the middle of July or the end of July, it doesn't matter, right? You're not going to have your kid's teacher until, you know, September. But to go through that process and have now this sense of common planning is now lost in some way, right? Because people are now viewing this as, you know, some sort of machination of, you know, administrative prerogative or something like that, that, you know, detracts from whatever, right? When it's not. It's a great teaching practice that you're putting in place that puts a little, you know, puts a damper on this notification. So I think the board, I will speak for the board when I say that these are the kinds of things that we want you to be sensitive to moving forward, to be aware of moving forward, and to preempt these kinds of concerns moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 255 Harrison Avenue. Jason, thank you for reading out that email, because I did want to also just quickly reference it. I have a sort of a different question. I've actually been, as I like to point out, around the district for a while, so we've received those disappointing letters from time to time throughout the year when you think you're getting a class placement. And you don't, and it, you know, you get over it. In fact, last year, the kid leaving Irving, I have a second grader here at Bartle, when she was in first grade leaving Irving, we got the letter because it's a large class, and the class was growing. They had five first grade classes, and the, but they sent a letter out. It was very explicit, and explained that we weren't getting a class placement because the class was growing from five classes to six classes, and they had to add a teacher. So it was really, you know, you could really appreciate, they needed to hire a teacher, and they certainly couldn't make these placements. Anyway, it brought to mind when this came out though, that the way I read your letter, Mr. Compon, or, I'm sorry, I guess it was from Ms. Fraser, but that the class arrangements had been made. So I have, I think, a softball question, which is really just, do we know what our class sizes look like? Have the, you know, I'm wondering if there's been a change to class size. In other words, right now, there's six second grade classes. I'm wondering whether those rising third graders, whether there's going to be six classes or five classes, whether that's part of, you know, those little groups, it sounds like have been formed, they just haven't been assigned the teacher. So I'm just curious if there's been a change to overall class size, and whether there'll be six classes for that rising third grade.
Kim, I haven't even looked at it. I haven't even looked at it.
So...
I can't answer your question. I haven't looked at it.
So across the board though, in general, is there, in other words, do we know if there's a change to class size when you're talking about the last board meeting, or when we did the budget at the board meeting, efficiencies and sort of that type of staff, you know, number of teachers per student?
The efficiencies and the conversation we had about the schedules between Irving and Bartle was surrounding the specialists.
Right. So, in other words, I can assume that there's not a change to general class size?
I don't anticipate that you're going to see any change in class size.
But someone knows that there's been six third grade classes formed as opposed to five? I mean, it's something someone has done.
That's what I posted.
You just don't happen to know.
Again, we were looking at the schedule, you're looking at overall staffing, okay? The number of issues that we've had in the district as far as certifications and making sure people are where they belong.
Right. Well, it seems like you're looking at the staffing and the schedule that you would sort of have to know also, and how many special teachers, that how many classes are there in the third grade or the, like, you know, like five of every grade versus six in every grade changes all those other things you're speaking to.
But it's more than that, because if you have people that have been in positions that they shouldn't have been because of certification reasons, and if you're looking to make sure that you maintain all staff, and then you're looking at the bumping, okay, to make sure that the people that you have on staff go into those positions to make sure that they're filled, that's the first step. And so when you're talking about then what the schedules are going to be, and how you utilize that staff to make sure that you retain everyone, you're looking at certifications before you're looking at the names.
Okay. Well, I would like to sort of add, I guess, that I feel the heart of a great school system is sort of small class size, and I hope that, you know, as that work's being done this summer, especially at Irving and Bartle, that, you know, that that's foremost. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Excuse me, I want to ask the students, do you guys have finals tomorrow?
No, they're seniors.
They might have them, I don't know.
Let's hope not. No.
I was just thinking, you might want to go.
She's giving you an out.
Take it.
She's giving you an out.
Take it.
Well, Lena has her salutatorian speech due tonight.
Oh, that's very important.
Yeah.
Yes, you should.
Take the out.
Thank you, girls.
You're going to stay? Okay.
Andrew Zappa, 131 Johnson Street. With regard to the limitation of time for the meetings overall, I just want the board to just think of the historical perspective of limiting anything related to this process. I think it should be evident why that should just never occur. You should just allow it to go as long as it needs. This meeting will probably end before 11:00. And those were emergency meetings that went late because you guys had a lot to discuss, and we had a lot to discuss. And I think it's important that that just be allowed to occur. So that's all I'm going to say about that. With regards to the scheduling, my biggest concern about that, because my sons are entering Bartle, is whenever you have an issue with scheduling, and I'm just going to think back to me, I don't want anyone to think of kids and schools as being a manufacturing plant, but whenever you can't firm up a schedule, it's because there's some mathematical component that's missing, something that maybe hasn't been nailed down. I understand it could be staffing, it could be their certifications, and my only concern is that you're going to try and find some way through efficiencies to reduce staff again. So I hope that's not the case. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Andrew. That is not the case, by the way. That is not the case, by the way.
Judy Yang, 14 North Second. As I listened to Ellen speak a little earlier on the process, more transparency in the process on how we look to bring in a principal on, just something quickly popped into my mind, so I just want to put it out there. Even when applicants apply to college, the admissions committee Google these kids and actually see. So sometimes before you even bring the guys in, you can save a lot of man hours, you know? Let technology do a little work. That being said, I think sometimes the answers sometimes sit in front of us and we don't actually see sometimes a simple answer. And I get opportunities sometimes to talk to parents out there who I know have also said this to me. Currently, we have an interim principal over at the high school, Mr. Soto. And the suggestion that I've heard and I also would endorse is that they look to Mr. Soto taking the position, combining with his current position, if you're looking for some fiscal savings, because that's what you had mentioned before, so that he takes a small bump and you combine with his position, you take it on the chin a little bit. So I know some parents who've said that they would endorse that. He's done a great job over there. I know of other parents have really said, you know, they were skeptical of him in the beginning, and they was like, they've won, they've won me over, that's what they've said to me. And so I just want to put that out there, that he's straightened out the school for a year or two, and then you guys have longer time to find the right principal. Maybe the answer's right there in front of you.
Thank you very much. Israel, what do you say?
That's a nice compliment, Mr. Soto.
Yeah. Mr. Soto, thank you for your excellent work at the high school.
Thank you for the voters' confidence, I appreciate that, thank you.
Hello, I'm Heather Wilkerson, 247 Lincoln Avenue. I'm here to follow Ellen and Judy to talk about the principal hire. I was actually on the high school principal hiring committee, and it was a great honor since I have so many kids coming through the high school. It's a really incredibly important decision, as all these administrative and principal decisions are. Mr. Soto ran a terrific committee meeting. We had a couple of good candidates, but I walked away feeling really uneasy about what we had just been through. I, I didn't feel like we had really gotten the information and been able to vet the candidates well enough within the process that, that you guys put forth. And I just have a couple of suggestions. I think that it's really important for us to know when we start the process, to really have an idea of how many applicants applied for the job, and be told what the criteria the initial selection committee is working with, so that we understand why these particular candidates are put before us. Of course, a half hour per applicant really is very little time to kind of vet through all the information in front of you, really kind of look through their credentials and go through the interview. It was a lot of information to try to absorb and really form a solid opinion about this The other piece of information that I think that would be really important at the beginning of the process is some idea of what the overall process is, and that was not given to us right in the beginning. I think we need to be told again, the number of applicants, the criteria, and then the next steps after we vet the applicant, what's going to happen? Who's going to look at him? How long is it going to take to make a decision? Are we going to be called back and, and kind of be asked to give more feedback? And that, that piece also, I think, is, is very important. I think that to have a hiring committee come in and sit for a day and review all this information and then just kind of go away is really ineffectual. I think that, that it needs to be, if, if you're really looking for the input of that hiring committee, you really need to kind of let them sit on it and then revisit it and have at least a little bit of a dialogue about kind of what they thought when they went away, if they heard any new information, if they Googled them, for instance. And I, I think that's it. I think that, I think it's a great opportunity now that you guys have put this principal hire on, taken it off the table, it's a great opportunity now to kind of look at the process and, and try to do it in a way that really inspires trust and confidence in the teachers and the parents. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
I'm Bobby A. Kumar, Cedar Avenue. I just had a couple of real quick questions, I think, just to follow up on some of the scheduling changes. There does seem to be, if you could just explain, I guess, what common planning is? I think a few meetings ago, there was a request, I think, by Darcy to get samples of what possible schedules would look like for Irving and for Bartle, and if there are any changes that you're thinking about. I know that with Ms. Krant leaving Irving, the district is down ESL teachers, so when you talk about shared services within the districts, sort, within the schools within the district, sort of what do you mean? I mean, are there going to be shared services within ESL? Are there going to be groupings in a particular way? Is that part of some of the macro things that you're thinking about in terms of the time you need to get your scheduling in place? So I guess my question is, what's happening with ESL? What, if anything, is happening with specials? I know there was talk at one point with things about gym, and I guess what does the board know or what can be shared with the public about what some of these schedules would potentially look like for Irving and Bartle with some of the shared services?
So the basic premise is that all of the specials for the grade level occur at the same time? And that allows all of those teachers to have the same time off for planning? So they would move through per grade level all of the specials through those two buildings?
So like, for example, how does gym work?
Well, it's, it would be by grade level, so all second graders would have gym, would have art, would have music, would go to their specials at the same time.
Okay, so does the time allotted to those classes change? Does the grouping within those classes change? If my, if my child goes to gym or art and he's in a class of 25, it's that class, right now, his class goes to art? And so that's the class that would go within art, and the time allotted to those specials is not changing, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, are there any changes to ELL?
The, the ELL program, it was determined that there was a more efficient way to do it, and so that's, that's one of the things that is overlaid between the two buildings as far as the usage of staff and the time that they see those students.
Okay, so, so there will be, I guess, one teacher between the two, Bartle and Irving?
Correct.
Okay. And then on another item, I guess it was item 22 on the finance committee on the windows? So that's, so $720,000 was moved from the Capital Reserve to help fund this window project of which, you know, 40% was funded by a grant, is that correct?
Through rod grant, yeah.
Okay, so $432,000 were spent to upgrade the Bartle windows, is that?
No. No.
I mean, 40% is coming from grant money, 60% of it is-
The amount that is in the agenda is the local, the district share of the grant. The state pays 40% of the total amount, this represents 60% of the total amount.
And this is about $200,000 under budget?
No, that's fine, I'm not asking whether it's over or under budget, I'm just asking what the dollar is.
Under, under what we originally, sorry, hold on, wait, I may be wrong.
The contract came in under budget.
Right.
Once the contract is, once the project is completed, then any remaining funds will return to Capital Reserve.
How much is it costing the district to replace these windows?
The district share is $720,000.
Okay.
The state is paying another 40% of the total.
Okay. And so that replaces all of the windows at Bartle, is that correct? Was there, I'm just curious, I know that we're clearly in a budget situation here. Was there a particular need to replace all of those windows at once versus doing them in stages? It seems, it's a large number, I mean.
The project is to replace all the windows, other than the windows that were replaced in the later, 1996 referendum, which are newer windows. All the windows are the same age, it's more efficient to replace all of them at one time.
Okay.
It's more cost efficient.
And we have, we have the possibility of the rod grant at this point.
And that was what spurred us to even do this project.
Right.
Okay, but 720 is what the district is paying right now, that's absent the rod grant?
It's not out the door.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Not yet.
No, you misheard, you misheard what she said, she didn't say "out the door," she said-
Out the door.
Yeah, no, no.
Oh, what did she say?
She said, I don't know what she said, but whatever you said was correct. 720,000 is the district share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She said absent rod grant.
Oh, absent, absent the rod grant.
I thought she said "out the door."
Lainey Rockman, 201 South Second Avenue. Who initially decides what people? I have to say this, you know, when people get up here to speak, it would really be respectful if everyone looks at them. Who decides what people from the initial application, from the initial applicants go to the final panel of teachers and parents? In other words, who, who took that pile of paper of applicants and decided which were the final applicants to go to that final panel?
We do a district screening at the district office, we put them through, we bring in-
Who's "we"? Who's "we"?
Well, the district administration, okay, either myself, or Mr. Soto, or Ms. Callis, or a combination thereof.
Well, she's not, Ms. Callis is not here anymore. So you, Mr. Soto, anyone else?
Ms. Callis. And from then, we send all of those applicants, all the ones that are screened have gone on to the committee.
Okay, so two people, basically is what you're saying, you and Mr. Soto, decide from a large pool of applicants, who the final applicants will be who goes to that final panel, is that correct?
There are three people who do it, Ms. Callis, Mr. Soto, and Mr. Capone.
Okay, well, Ms. Callis isn't going to be here anymore, so I assume through this next round that it will be you and Mr. Soto, is that correct? That's just a yes or no?
We didn't, we didn't, yes.
Thanks. If it's at all possible, I would like to reiterate what Ellen Liebowitz said before and have that initial, the initial decision made by a panel and not just Mr. Capone and not just Mr. Soto. I think that there are parents who should be a part of that. And to say that they can't be, I wonder what the reason would be. Is there a reason why you wouldn't have parents on that panel or teachers on that initial No response? Is it possible to have them on there?
We have followed the same process for all three principals. We did a screening at the district office, we sent on candidates to-
I didn't ask you that, you're not answering my question.
And then the recommendation comes back to me.
I know that, you didn't answer my question. My question is, is it, let me finish, let me finish. Is it possible to have parents and teachers also making that initial decision about the applicants that go on to the final panel? Is it possible? Yes or no?
Anything is possible, Lainey.
And some things are impossible. So are you saying it's possible that you might consider that?
I, I'm-
Do you think, do you think that it's a reasonable consideration?
We have a process by which we follow.
I know you do.
That's the process. We're not looking to change the process.
So you wouldn't consider having teachers or parents on that initial determination? Is that what you're saying, Adam?
I'm, I'm saying I'm not looking to change the process, no.
So that's what you're saying. So denying teachers or parents to sift through those initial applicants, well, that's transparent. My next question is CPAC. Are you allowing CPAC parents to be on the committee to determine the special services director?
The position is on the agenda tonight to be approved. She means for the, she means for the- For the interim. She means for the-
Not for the interim.
She means when we hire a director.
For the permanent. Are CPAC parents going to be on the panel to decide who the permanent special services director will be?
I don't see why we wouldn't include CPAC parents.
Oh, because I understand that you said no, that they weren't going to be on that panel. So you're considering that they should-
We haven't scheduled, we haven't posted a position for a permanent director.
When you do, will you consider having CPAC parents on that panel to discuss the hiring of the new director?
You know what I recommend? I think maybe we should have a committee to talk about the hiring process within the district at every single level. I think maybe that's the appropriate thing to do so we can get all these opinions about the personnel- That's fine. -process and create a process for different levels. That's fine, because the process hasn't changed in the last five years, to my understanding.
I don't appreciate your sarcasm.
I'm not being sarcastic. We, meeting after meeting, get questions about personnel, about this process, that process, what it is. So if we want to have opinions, okay, then let's sit and have a committee and talk about what we expect for the town, for the community, for the hiring within this district. I don't think that that's, number one, not sarcastic, number two, you seem to think that there's lots of people that would want to go through and screen resumes, that know what they're looking for, that would, would be interested in that as far as doing that. Okay? I don't know that to be true. We followed the process that was established here, we've gone through it for each, all of the district office was done the same. Yep. Each one of the principals has been done the same, the teachers have been all done the same way. That's been the process. If you want to change the process, then let's have a committee to have a conversation about changing the process.
Mr. Capone, you don't know that there are people available because you haven't asked.
Because it hasn't been the process. It hasn't been the process. That's never been the protocol of this district, ever, ever.
I would like to-
Don't speak to me that way.
I'm not speaking to you that way, I'm speaking to every-
I would like to suggest, this is something that I've spoken with our New Jersey School Boards Association rep about a couple of times now, I would like for, I appreciate Tim's suggestion that we sit down and form some kind of committee about this, I would like to be on that committee, I would like to have Gwen come, talk to us about other standard procedures in other districts. I don't see any problem with that, and I don't, I'm sorry, I don't agree that the process has been consistent every time. The first one, the fir-
What's changed?
What's changed? Apparently for the one at Irving, there was about 10 parents on it, they had to sign confidentiality agreements, we've seen all kinds of things that we've never seen before. So to sit here and say from the board table that every process has been the same is not correct, in my opinion.
I think what Adam means is, I'm not, I'm not going to be, no, I'm just saying, I think what you mean is the process is the same is, because, I mean, even when, you know, not when I was a parent, I'm still a parent, before I was on the board, you know, the main office, you know, they screen the resumes, they put together a committee and somebody gets on the committee. That has not changed.
Exactly. Thank you, Jerry.
Anything else, Lainey?
All I can say is the, the defensive remarks are a very transparent response to a very reasonable request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I re-sign?
Excuse me, I just want to remind the public of our policy. 0167, if you could please make sure you read number five, A, B, C, D, and E. Okay, well, when people go home, they can look it up. It's just a suggestion about the way that we phrase public comments.
Ellen, please.
Hi, Ellen Liebowitz again. I just, I just need to comment about one of Mr. Capone's responses to, to Ms. Rockman, because it was, it was actually misleading. I was on the committee, we were told by the facilitator of the committee that Mr. Capone was the only one who read the resumes, and that it was based on that screening that the six candidate, that those six candidates that he alone recommended brought forward. Now, is that the case or not? Because what, the answer you gave was that it could be, you know, any one of the central administrators.
That's correct.
That's not what we were told. Well, your response, I'm sorry, with all due respect, your response was misleading.
Ellen, I think...
We were told by Mr. Soto, who was the facilitator of the committee, that Mr. Capone was the only one who screened the resumes.
Right, and Mr. Capone, in answering the question, said that the central office staff, right, it could have been Israel, it could have been Tim, it could have been Michelle, we don't know, we're not, we're not talking about what the other two processes were, right, we're talking about this particular process.
That's correct.
So to say, to say that, that the answer was misleading, generally, I don't think is fair.
I'm just, perhaps it wasn't intentional, but I wanted to clarify and make sure that everybody knew what, what the committee members were told.
Sure.
Okay?
Yep, thank you.
And, and I wasn't going to say this tonight, but I'm, I've decided to say it. I think that the searches that have happened in the recent past are a reflection of the leadership of the district. It's problematic, and we need to look at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there any other public comment?
Evening, Rob Ruslavage, 123 Magnolia Street. A simple question for you, last week, I think there is a question about whether or not gifted and talented in the programming for that. Any determination was made as to whether or not it's going to be a push-in or a pull-out sort of program? And again, I, I haven't heard any discussion on it yet, so I was wondering if there's been a determination on that program for next year.
It is going to be a pull-out portion for the project-based learning and the rest of the standards and the instruction is embedded within the classroom.
Okay, based on that, is there any potential for an extension for people to promote or encourage their children to be part of that program, since now we sort of have some sort of idea of what it's going to look like? And now, parents might have a little bit more comfort level signing their children up for something that, you know, before this, they had no idea what it would look like.
If you want to submit for your child to be tested, Rob, go ahead, that, that's fine. The, the screening that they've done is the first step. We received a large number, they've gone through them, they're now going into the next round of screening, and this is, you know, intended to be inclusive. So if you miss the deadline, go ahead and submit the paperwork. Okay? As, as far as what the program looks like, as far as contact time, when we have 150 recommendations and there's currently like 10 kids in the program, there, there's a pretty big gap from what has occurred to what is going to occur, and it's really going to depend on the numbers.
Okay, and you think the recommendation earlier this year to let go one of your gifted and talented staff was based on the idea that one person could handle 150 or more students with the...
I didn't say there was going to be 150 students in the program. I said there were 150 applicants.
Okay. So based on the idea you had 10 before and you knew it would expand, you, you thought it was a good idea to get rid of one of the staff from the gifted and talented program? Or are we going to be adding staff to that program later on?
That was the appropriate decision in my mind.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Julia Klimwitz, Mrs. Kay, and my address is the high school. Okay. I want to thank you again for your gracious speech and kind words, that was nice. I have my red shirt on, it's supposed to show we're all together. I appreciate your decision to delete the first number-one thing. I want to believe that everyone has learned something from this process. The word transparency came up again tonight, and I was in a position where someone had lost their job and I was, happened to be on a trip with them, and it was mortifying to me, it was embarrassing to me, that the person found out they were not rehired from reading the board minutes. I hope you understand what that means. That means that someone was told in writing they did not get the job, but they were not told in person. And I've been in Highland Park for a long time, and years ago, if you did not get a job, the board, the principal, whoever was in charge, had the decency to talk to the person, maybe in March, and say, you know what? Things don't look good, start to look now. We don't have to tell you till April unless we see things that are happening. And there have to be people in place that if you don't like what someone is doing or you don't care for how they do something in the classroom, that you have someone at the top in that building to be able to teach them how to improve. I came into this school many years ago and I was in trouble all the time. But you didn't get yelled at in front of anybody, you were backed up, and then you went into the back room, and then you were blasted why you did something the way, or the way I did it. But it made me a better person and I learned a lot from it, because the person who was teaching me had a human side to them. And that human side used to be in Highland Park. And something is, just, there's a disconnect someplace. So I would hope, I'm not going to be here, but I hope you get it back, because this is really a great place to be, and it's a special town, and a lot of people who come in don't realize that when we say Highland Park, it's Highland Park, it really is Highland Park. I don't live here, I've been here, like I've lived here, but it really is unique, and you have a lot of wonderful qualities. Don't lose them with not doing the next thing I'm going to talk about. The next thing I want to talk about is logic. If you could do things in a logical order, ask questions, ask the peon that's in the classroom, how does something work? Or if you have someone that's atop, who's gone through all the steps, has been a teacher, a master teacher, and now has become maybe the department chairperson if we had them, and then you go to be a vice principal and a principal, and you're knowledgeable in all those things, that's the kind of person you want to run your school. So you can rely on them, and they know what the experience is like to have been in the classroom. So they can speak for both the student and the teacher, and be a backup. And I know every, you know, I know most of you up here anyway, but to be educated in education is really important. So maybe on this committee could be someone that knows about grounds and construction, and somebody else on this committee is a business person that knows how to do the money in the books. And then you come together, because I like what you talked about, about coming together and asking questions, and it was brought up by somebody, that, the next part of my thing was the reasoning skill. That, and I teach this in class, what is a reasoning skill? The next step that makes logic of what you just did, so it all flows in a progression and it works well. So the reasoning skill was the next step, what could I do? If you have a problem, ask somebody. Ask a question, how do you think this would work? Because I, Highland Park was never like this. You got together, you had a committee, someone brought up about the interview committee. I was on those interview committees. We sat down and we sat for hours and read every damn resume that went through over that desk. And we talked about everybody, and we had verbal stuff going on, and it went over a couple days, or we met after school, whenever it was, we did it. So we really felt comfortable with the person that we wanted at the top. My next problem is nepotism. It's important to hire someone because of their expertise, not because someone knows them. I, if I bring someone to the table, it's because I'm going to give them a recommendation that they're good. I don't expect someone to come to the, to bring someone I'm going to be embarrassed by because they don't know what they're doing. And I think that's really important. I talked about the transparency already, about someone finding out, reading about themselves in the minutes, that they did not get hired, did not get a job. I hope you'll revisit that, because it's really not a very, I say classy, way of doing things, but the human side would be nice to come out. What else? Someone brought up Mr. Soto being the principal. He does a great job, but he wears many hats. Does he really want to do this job? Really? Okay? But we have to ask him, so really, you know? He's the head of operations, he's supposed to watch over the grounds, he's supposed to mentor a new principal, and he's supposed to stand outside and greet the students and watch what they're wearing when they come into school. Really? Let's get uniforms, because khaki pants and a red shirt or black and red, nobody would have to worry about anybody's chest coming out of their shirt, their stomach sticking out, the shorts up their butt, and what the boys are wearing. The boys are out there too, boys look pretty bad too, with the big, you know, big open sides. They're not supposed to wear straps, so I think everybody should wear T-shirts. But I won't be here to comment on that next year, anyway. All right? I like something that was said about being clear. I teach this and I talk about this to my students and myself and my own family. If you make a mistake, apologize. The word apologize, it's okay to say, I screwed up. All right? We made a mistake, let's move on. The process is called owning it. Own up. Own it, I screwed up, I did it, I wish I didn't, how can I move on? And we make it clear that we're trying to help ourselves, so we all work together. And if you do that, you find that after you make that blunder, I don't expect it, repeat it again, but at least you tried and you accept that you made a mistake. Look yourself in the mirror, we are not perfect. And the sooner you find the problems you have, you're 50% past the battle of what you can do to do better. And let's see. I agree that it's good to discuss, oh my God, I wrote so many notes. All right? And then a couple suggestions for, for me, outside. Maybe you could get the grounds people to maybe hire somebody else so that everything could be taken care of, and the same people aren't running around killing themselves all hours of the day trying to make all the buildings look nice or the grass get cut. I don't know how that works. You can handle that. Oh, my one comment, about the gym. The gym is so hot. So, last year, the year before, we spent thousands of dollars on a system that blows hot air around when it's hot out, and blows cold air around when it's cold out. So it's not a cooling system, and when you're in a sport and you're sweating, if it's cold out, you're cold, if it's hot out, you're hot. It hasn't made much of an improvement. But about 12 years ago, I sat with Stephen Nolan, who was my student, who was here and was a mayor, and we talked about just throwing a ventilating ceiling fan in the side of the wall and let it suck the air out. So it's really not a bad idea. If your kids play sports, they can tell you. All right? And now, it was nice to hear nice things about me, it would be nice to see everybody agree, come to some kind of conclusion, so that we can leave school this year, not that I'm getting a contract, but that you can leave school knowing that everything's ratified and everything is good, and start on the right foot, and a happy high note come September. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Is there any other public comment? Claire, could we have the curriculum motions, please?
Uh, yes, hold on, let me, let me get back to it. I would like, I would like to move items one through nine on the agenda for curriculum.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion about the curriculum items? Okay, Linda, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman? I'm sorry. Oh, that's right, he left, I'm sorry. Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Catherine, could we have the finance items moved, please?
I'd like to move items one through 33, 32, and 30, I'm sorry, one through 31 and one, the other two on finance, on the addendum. Second.
Is there any discussion of those items?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes. Anne?
I would like to move items two through 14 on the regular agenda with the corrections to number four that I read in before, and items 15 and 16 on the addendum.
Is there any, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion of those items?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
I'm going to abstain on two through six until we have further discussion about the hiring process, and yes on the rest.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
Anne, can you move the policy items, please? Or item?
Give me a minute.
It's just...
Just one.
Just one.
Okay, I'd like to move item one.
Second.
Is there any discussion of any of the policies?
Ms. Aversa?
Yes.
Ms. Berkowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Bull?
Yes.
Ms. Simarusti?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Sherber?
Yes.
Mr. Warden?
Yes.
For the president's report, I just want to start by just, again, congratulating the teachers of the year and the retirees. Ms. Kay and Ms. Potabekki were teachers of mine when I was in school here, and Ms. Radke has done an amazing job of teaching my son the finer points of Vivaldi. So I look forward to their continued growth throughout the school. And to the student reps, again, thank you again so much for your service and good luck in your future. The only other thing that I want to discuss is just the events that we have coming up. We have a number of really excellent events that I hope the public will be coming out for. Our moving up or graduation events, we have the high school graduation, which is June 23rd at 6:00 PM on the front lawn of the high school. The eighth grade moving up is June 23rd at 11 o'clock in the middle school gym. Bartle moving up is June 23rd at 9:15 in the Bartle School Gym. And the Irving first grade show is Friday, June 20th at 10:00 AM in the Irving Gym. The award ceremonies that we still have remaining this year, we have the eighth grade awards, which is June 9th, uh, June 19th, rather, at 11:00 AM in the high school auditorium, and the Bartle award ceremony, which is June 20th at 9:00 AM in the Bartle Gym. We have a technology committee meeting coming up. We had our first one on June 11th, which was pretty small, but we're hoping that we can have a better turnout Thursday, June 26th at 6:30 PM in the middle school cafeteria. And that's it for the president's report.
I just want to share that Claire and I were at the senior awards along with Tim and, and Israel, and it was, it was really just, it's wonderful to, you know, to see how, how much is being achieved in the high school. It's, it's, it's a great night.
And, and I was at the student, student of the year banquet with Jerry, who is there as a, the mother of an honorary, and, and Catherine. And it's, and, and we don't do it in Piscataway, we don't do something like this, but to have everybody there with their families who had been, you know, the nine through 12 student of the year in each of the months, and then come out and have that celebration, just phenomenal. And Michelle Marr, who put the event together, did a really wonderful job. The, each of the presenters that were there read the, the sort of the bios, the recommendations from the teachers about each of the students who had won each month from each of the grade levels. So they were celebrated again, and then a student of the year was selected, and the jazz band played, and it was a very, very positive event, which I was very, very pleased to be a part of.
I was at, also at the NHS and they, you know, they had the band there, Ms. Duzey did a phenomenal job putting that together as well, so it is, it's just, it's a special time of year, and at least we, you know, just get to recognize so many of our students and accomplishments in the high school, it's really great.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, definitely. Is there any old business?
I'd just like to update everybody quickly. Today, the full assembly approved A30, A3081, sorry, it's getting late, which is great. It's going to be heard by the Senate Education Committee this Thursday. I'm hoping I can go and deliver the same testimony that I delivered before the Assembly Education Committee. Frankly, I'm kind of shocked that it's being considered by the Senate, but it is. So I'm glad and hopeful and I'll keep everybody updated. And the other thing I want to let you know is I have seen multiple other resolutions now coming out of other districts, which is really exciting. And I've connected with the president of the Washington Township Board of Education, who's passed a similar resolution, and she and I are going to get together and try to get the resolution to as many other districts as we can. So we're hopeful that that will continue to put additional pressure on the Senate right now.
Yeah. And again, I just want to thank Ashley and Darcy for helping me. The three of us got together and wrote that. And it is, it's fantastic to see the resolution making the rounds and the more press and the more interest that it gets. It really is, you know, it's clearly a testament to the way that it was written, the contributions of everybody. And I look forward to seeing the impact that it's going to have for this bill. And of course, contact your local representatives. Ours are, is Barnes a co-sponsor?
Senator Barnes? I don't believe there are any Senate co-sponsors yet, or at least I haven't seen them. They may have started with co-sponsors, but I haven't seen it. But Dagnan, I believe, is one of the co-sponsors in the Assembly. Assemblyman Dagnan and Nancy Pinkin were great hands with them and I believe with Senator Barnes as well. And just in case anybody's here who doesn't recall what the legislation is, it's to create a task force to take a look at both Common Core and Park and would put a two-year implementation delay on any stakes attached to the testing and so much...
Not the testing itself.
Not the testing itself, yes. The testing would still commence, but there would be no stakes attached. And one of the more fascinating developments, I think, in the last couple of weeks is that the Gates Foundation has come out and said that they support the idea of no stakes being attached to the test for two years, which is a little bit like Frankenstein saying they don't like their monster anymore. But I was, I was interested to see that.
That is very interesting. Is there other old business? Is there any new business?
I have a question. So, because I want to introduce this for a first reading, but I don't know how long it will take. And judging by the time and that I have to leave at 11:00, I don't know if there's enough time to even do it. So can somebody tell me what the process is?
The process, I believe, is that you, you are going to, I mean, you would create a motion. If the motion gets a second, then we would vote to add the policy for first reading for the next meeting.
Okay. So then we don't read it and discuss it tonight? I'm just trying to judge the time.
The board doesn't usually read through, you know, without having a chance to have reviewed it before. I would, I would think that it would be appropriate for you to send out or distribute to the board so that they can take a look at it. It has been reviewed by the policy committee though, who didn't choose to bring it forward. And I suppose at this point, the full board could decide whether to bring it forward. But they should have some time to review it ahead of time, to read something in a meeting or to hear you dictate it in a meeting. I don't believe that that's effective. So, Mr. Ross, it's your decision if you would recommend that she, you know, just present it for their review and then she can suggest that it be brought forward for first reading, but...
I think what I'd like to do is pass it out so everybody can look at it and at the next meeting, bring it up.
I would suggest maybe bringing it up under old business in the next meeting and then the board can decide whether to bring it forward for a first review during that meeting.
Okay. Sounds good.
So can I pass it out now?
Sure.
Okay. It's the same one that you gave us last time?
No.
It's changed from last time?
It has changed, yes. It's typed.
Okay. I had it, so it was the same.
So you don't want to use the last one?
That's why I, that's why I was asking, because if it was, then I didn't need it because I still have it.
No, it's typed.
Okay.
Is there enough? Here's more.
I think there's enough.
Can we get one sent to Greg?
Do you have a, oh, a paper copy?
Do you have it on electronically?
Yeah, I can send it to him.
Yeah, send it to Greg and send it to Adam.
Oh, Adam.
Adam had to go.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Is there any other new business? Hall of Fame Board of Education welcomes public participation and has reserved this time for your comments. Please, if you're interested in making public comment, go up to the podium, state your name, address, and remember that we are still operating on a three-minute timeframe.
Anne Gowan, South Second Avenue. I think enough negative stuff has already been said, some of which I agree with, some of which I don't.